Time is 6:30 on December the 20th, 2022. Mayor and council are called to order. All council members are present. Our mayor is not feeling well, and he has a message for you. He says, Mayor, well, Mayor Keener could not be here this evening as he's tested positive for COVID on Sunday, December the 18th, with a fever of 103.2. He is following CDC guidelines and quarantining at home for a minimum of five days. These are also the recommendation of his physician. The mayor asks that you keep him in your prayers. Now, can we stand for the Pledge of Allegiance? I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, and liberty and justice for all. And please stand for the invocation, please.
Let us pray. Lord, we are mindful tonight, as we drove over here, of lights and color and beauty and decorations and trees. Lord, we thank you for a season that is undeniably your season. Lord, we honor you and the plan that you brought to this earth, that is your Son. Lord, we are so grateful that we are in a city where the King is still the King of kings and always will be. And we honor his Son in light and excitement and joy and peace among our people so that we can be citizens of your kingdom. Lord, tonight, we lift up Mayor Keener and ask you for healing for he and his family. Lord, we lift up Mayor Pro Tim Price as she steps into an arena that she's not really comfortable in most of the time, but leads our meeting and helps us make good decisions. And Lord, we lift up a group of people that's bigger than we usually see and ask that you would give each of them the wisdom to make their arguments well, to make those in opposition to listen carefully, and wisdom to this council to make a wise decision. We just ask that you would bless all those who are here. Lord, we ask that you would bring peace on this earth and goodwill when we're finished. Lord, we pray that prayer in the name of the Son, in Jesus' name. Amen.
I have a couple of announcements. The next tree board meeting has been canceled, but normally their meeting is on December the 22nd at 6:00 PM in the community room. The planning commission meeting has been canceled. Their normal meeting will be December the 27th, 6:00 PM at the community room. Council, the next council work session is January the 5th, 2023, 6:30 in the community room. Main Street Commission meeting is January the 10th, 2023, 8:00 AM in the community room. Historic Preservation Meeting, January the 10th, 2023, 6:00 PM, the community room. The Social Circle Development Authority Meeting is January the 12th, 2023, at 3:00 PM, City Hall Conference Room. Council Meeting, January the 17th, 2023, 6:30 PM, in the community room. Council Retreat will be January the 27th, 2023, 6:00 PM, Social Circle High School. And then we have another council retreat the next day, January the 28th, 2023, 8:00 AM, Social Circle High School. And these, and that, those are our announcements for this evening. Now, we will have presentations.
Thank you, Mayor Pro Tim Price. Thank you, Mayor Pro Tim Price. We do have one employee to recognize tonight. I want to recognize our newest employee, Ashley Davis. Ashley is our new Community Development Director. She is, has come to us with a background, she was a planning director of local Hope County, and she's also served as GIS and Planning Administrator, Planning Administrator for Barrow County. Her responsibilities are, she's got oversight of the planning and zoning, business license permits and inspections. So, we recognize Ashley tonight.
Thank you.
Leading Mayor Pro Tim to council. Two officers, new officers we hired, and one cannot be here tonight. Officer Barnes could be here if he's available, officer out of Cuny, Georgia. Don't say anything. Thank y'all.
Welcome to the city.
Thank you. So, now I recognize Amber McKippen to give us a rundown rundown.
Good evening. I have a short rundown for the last month and this year. I handed out a list that you should have of our events for Main Street. That'll be on the rundown here. Wrap up on the Christmas events, we held the Christmas tree lighting on Friday, November the 18th in Friendship Park. We had great attendance and many thanks to all who participated and the vendors who offered various treats and activities for that event. The Main Street Commission also hosted Nativity on November the 20th and December the 4th in Friendship Park. This was performed by members of the Social Circle Theater. Hay rods were sponsored by J.K. Design and the Dawson Lodge volunteered to manage smores. Both events were well attended. And then you should have a list of the 2023 Main Street events. The Social Circle Main Street Commission set their calendar of events this past week at their meeting. We're excited to announce that we have book swinging medallions for our August 2023 concert. So, that will be our first big concert here in Social Circle. And so, we're looking forward to that and to all of the fun and exciting things that we have planned for next year.
Great. Thank you, Amber.
Yes, ma'am.
Mayor Pro Tim and council, the third item on the presentations, the 2022 Art Presentation with Martin Jenkins. That's going to be postponed until next month. They were unable to make it this evening.
Okay. Thank you.
And that does it for our presentation portion of the agenda.
All right. Thank you, Eric. It seems we have, we do not have any citizens' requests. Do we have any council requests? All right. Take a minute and review the agenda as we need agenda approval.
Make a motion to approve the agenda.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Are we ready to vote? All in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Ayes have it, motion carries. Now, we are coming to our, we have several public hearings. And this is, first up, we're going to have a public hearing and the staff is going to come up and give a presentation. After that, the applicant will have 10 minutes to give us a presentation. And then after that, we will call for everyone that's in favor of and then everyone that is opposed. And each will then have 10 minutes to present their side. So, will staff come up and give us a presentation?
Good evening, council members. The applicant is requesting a rezon of plus or minus 240 acres at the northwest corner of I-20 and US 278 from Agriculture 2, or Ag 2, to the Stanton Springs Business Park zoning designation referred to as SSBP. In the past two comp plans that we've had, the gateway interchange character area has been given to this property, as you can see marked by the stars on the presentation, the red star and the white star. For those of you that can't see the presentation, it's also up here on this large map. It's been the same character area for the last two comp plans. The gateway interchange area has allowable land uses such as commercial, industrial, office, institutional, and it specifically mentions the SSBP in the 2022 to 2027 comp plan. And this property has been intended for this type of use since Facebook and Baxter came to this area. Staff recommended approval because the SSBP designation falls under acceptable uses according to the comprehensive plan and the future land use map that's been adopted by the council. The Planning Commission recommended denial because they asserted that the application was incomplete. This is a figure of the recorded plot of the property. And this is the aerial map showing where it is in relation to the city limits. And the next one is just an aerial map showing the subject property.
Counsel, do we have any questions?
Since you said staff, I mean, the planning zone recommended denial, future incomplete application.
Yes, sir.
What was the reason for incomplete application?
They stated that it did not meet the 1,000 acres that's required by the Stanton Springs Business Park portion of the code, which is Section 914. What it specifically states is, quote, "It is a part of a large-scale development of 1,000 acres or more located in at least two contiguous counties." And staff interpreted that to mean a common development, which we believe this property does need.
That was the only other reason?
From my understanding, yes.
Any other questions? Thank you.
Thank you.
Now, will the applicant want to speak? And I'll call the public hearing to order.
Good evening. My name is Brandon Bowen. I practice in Cardensville, Georgia. I'm a zoning attorney. I practice all over the state on zoning cases. I've had a number of cases with Mr. Powell over the years. And tonight, I'm here with you on behalf of the Newton County Industrial Development Authority. So, I appreciate the opportunity to speak with you. I agree with your staff's analysis of the application. Just to be a little bit more detailed, your Stanton Springs Business Park designation has two tiers. This is the property here. This is 278. This is 20. You know that. The proposal would be tier one uses here, which would be Class A industrial, like what you see on the other side of 20 already. And this would be tier two, which would be commercial. So, the plans would be restaurants and hotels. That is the goal of that area. So, as you know, this has long been the plan for this area and really a common development plan, as I understand it, between both the various counties and the city to bring this. So, this is the next step in this process. This is a plan, it's the same plan your staff just showed you. Can we go to the next slide? I want to really focus on, thank you, focus on your comprehensive plan. As your staff said, you've got a comprehensive plan that has identified this property as one of several for an industrial and employment center for the vicinity and, of course, for Social Circle as well. Obviously, this is the property, shows its gateway commercial. Can we go to the next slide, please? This is what your comprehensive plan says. The intended use for this property is a commercial and mixed-use employment center area. Interchange character area presents prominent distinctive landscaping and sensible arrival from the interchange. Large-scale buildings are well set back from the roadway, landscaped and accessed through consolidated entrances. That is all part of the plan. It shows that industrial and light industrial and general commercial and the mixed-use business park are the compatible zones and that the appropriate uses are commercial and industrial, i.e. the Stanton Springs Business Park. So, your planning says specifically, this is what we want to have happen here. And I understand this plan was adopted earlier this year by the city. That's really hard for me to read as my eyes have gotten older. But this is page 40 from your plan, and it's specifically, well, you're just going to take my word for it. That large-scale industrial uses are the appropriate use for this area. We're just asking for you to follow along with your plan. And this is the part where I get to be a lawyer and talk to you about why planning is important. I rarely speak at the Georgia Association of Zoning Administrators and GMA on zoning, and this is the drum that I always beat. The way we do it in Georgia is we develop a comprehensive plan and a future land use map, and then we put that into effect as projects come along. And these are what some of the leading cases from the Georgia Supreme Court say about that. Comprehensive plan serves as a guide for officials when making zoning decisions. Zoning is a method of carrying out the policies and goals of local government's comprehensive plan. This is important. Rezoning decisions that are consistent with a local government's comprehensive plan and particularly its future land use map are presumptively in furtherance of the public health, safety and welfare, which is the power to zone. And this is the corollary to that. A comprehensive plan loses its validity and enforceability when the local government sanctions the violation of its own plan. I will tell you, I was in middle Georgia in a county yesterday. I spent all day trying a case involving a rock quarry. In that case, I defended the local government that had denied the rock quarry. It was consistent with their comprehensive plan to deny that rock quarry. The plan said something else was supposed to go there, i.e. rural residential type uses. The rock quarry's lawyer spent the whole day going through the litany of every time that county had not followed its comprehensive plan and arguing to the judge, that's why they should be able to do what they want on their property. Case law says if we don't follow our comprehensive plan when it's hard to do so, we won't be able to rely on it on other occasions when we need to. That's why it's so important. And all we're asking, I know this is a political issue and, you know, that's tough. I understand that. But this has been the plan for this property for very many years. The Industrial Development Authority bought it with the support of Newton County and the Water and Sewerage Authority at extreme expense, reliant on that plan. And we want your assistance to keep that going forward so we can make this plan a reality. And that said, I appreciate your time. I'll be happy to answer any questions if I can.
Have any questions, counsel?
Can we go back to the map? Next map, back. All right. There's another tract of land that's in between this, is there not? A large tract.
This here?
Yeah.
Yes, that is not.
That's not included in your?
It's not included.
Any other questions?
Can I reserve any time I have left ever for rebuttal, please?
Yes, five minutes.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you. Is there anyone else here in favor of this project that would like to speak?
Mike Hopkins.
I'm Ronnie Cowan. I'm the District Five Commissioner, which covers this part of Newton County. We've looked at the project and the use of the land. We feel like it's in the best interest of both Social Circle and Newton County. We would like to have peripheral uses to support the Facebook area, the Takeda area, which is right across the road there. We think this would be the best interest of the county, and we appreciate your support. Thank you.
Thank you for your comments. Next, just come up and give us your name and address, everyone that wants to speak for this project.
My name is Mike Hopkins. I live in Covington, Georgia. I'm the Executive Director of the Newton County Water and Sewerage Authority. Been there 26 years. Lived in Covington all my life. We have extended sewer in 2017 to the southern portion of the property here, so there is active sewer. There's also plans and development for the internal sewer to be placed in as the property develops. We recently purchased from the city of Social Circle, a water along 278 down there, and also serves the DOT rest area. And as Commissioner Cowan said, we did support the bonding of purchasing this property with the hopes of growing it into a commercial quality development.
Good evening. My name is Marcelo Banes. I'm the Chairman of Newton County Board of Commissioners. Thank you so much for allowing us to be here tonight. We just want to come tonight and just thank you for the consideration on this zoning, rezoning. We want to be, continue to be great partners with Social Circle. We looked at your future land use map, and that's why we purchased this land, because it's a great area for growth for Newton County and Social Circle. So, guys, we greatly, again, we greatly appreciate your thought in this matter, so, thanks.
Good evening. I'm Debbie Harper. I'm President of the Newton Chamber. I live, lifelong resident of Newton County as well. We're excited about the opportunity that Stanton Grove brings to Newton County and Social Circle. Our mission at the Chamber is to be a catalyst for business growth, an advocate for business amongst our community partners, such as you all, and a champion for a better quality of life. And Stanton Grove could not be a more textbook example of that. I do want to mention, too, in lost and squashed alone, we're looking at major contributions to each of our tax digests that'll help fund infrastructure, quality of life and our school systems. So, we just look forward to continuing partnerships with Social Circle, Newton County, the Newton County Industrial Development Authority, the Office of Economic Development in Newton County and the Walton Chamber. So, thank you for letting us be here tonight.
Thank you. And I think that was it for all in favor. All in opposition, is there anyone here in opposition that would like to make a comment? Please come and provide your name and address, please.
Thank you. Mayor Pro Tim, Scott Gaither, 351 Richmond Drive. I'm here on behalf of the Planning Commission. And I'd like to point out, the Planning Commission heard this request and had a unanimous recommendation of denial based on a number of factors. Ms. Davis, welcome. She was not here at the time that the Planning Commission held the public hearing, so I'd like to just go over the reasons based on the ordinance itself. The Planning Commission found that the request is only for 240-plus acres, whereas the Stanton Springs Business Park District is permitted under the following conditions. A, it is part of a large-scale development of 1,000 acres or more located in at least two contiguous counties, neither of which are present at this location. Furthermore, the ordinance does date Section 914 dot seven, that the notification of the Chasper County, Morgan County, Newton Counties within three days of receipt of an application of rezoning to the Stanton Springs Business Park. I did ask Barbara at the public hearing if that had taken place, and she confirmed no, that no one had notified those organizations of this request as stated in the ordinance. Furthermore, the Planning Commission had a concern with the application as it lacked items that are stated as required in Section 1602 of our ordinance, which is applications for amendment, that is subsection C. All applications for amendment to rezone shall be accompanied by other such plans, elevations or additional information, as the city manager or this ordinance may require, showing the proposed development and its impact on natural and built systems. Additional information may include, without limitations, traffic studies, utility studies and drainage studies. At a minimum, the following shall be submitted. It breaks it down into residential developments versus commercial. I'll go into commercial and non-residential and multifamily districts proposals. Says show proposed layout of building at location and driveways and parking lots. Show proposed curb cuts or existing driveways and roadways. Show all required buffers and building setback lines. Show how utilities are to be provided, including but not limited to water, sewer, well and septic, and state the density per acre and the square feet per acre of each total buildings. So, the application was missing those items. So, in addition to, we contend based on the ordinance that the size of the property and the location, not in two contiguous counties, plus the fact that no one from the city notified those other jurisdictions of the request, and that that application was missing these items. That is what the Planning Commission found, and that's why the Planning Commission recommends denial. We do not disagree with Mr. Bowen's assessment of the comp plan, but the application itself and the zoning itself cannot be applied to this property based on the ordinance. Thank you.
Thank you for your comment. Any others in opposition that would like to speak?
I'm glad Mr. Gaither got to go in front because I won't say a lot of what he just said. And I need to use your map, too. My name is James Evans. I live on Dale Drive in Social Circle. I appreciate the opportunity tonight. I'm not a public speaker, so I probably will stumble a little bit, so please bear with me. I lived and worked in Atlanta for 38 years. During that time, I saw a lot change, some good and some bad. In 2004, my wife and I moved to Social Circle from what we left in Atlanta and we just had to get away from. 18 years after we've moved out here, we now see development coming. And we knew when we moved that development was going to come out here. It was just a given fact. I'm surprised that we were able to enjoy the country life for 18 years. I know there's going to be growth. I might not agree with the extent or the makeup and change that's going to take place, but the property being discussed tonight is covered, as Mr. Gaither said, by the Stanton Springs Development Business Park zoning guidelines. He also, Mr. Gaither, stated that on Section 3 of the Stanton Springs Development Plan, Section 9 dot 14 dot, 914 dot 1 states that the property must be large-scale development, 1,000 acres, two contiguous counties. It's not. The Stanton Springs Development Business Park ordinance also states, quote, "Health, safety and welfare of the citizens of Social Circle will be positively impacted, positively impacted by the adoption of the ordinance." I believe the lawyer, Mr. Bowen? Bowen, excuse me, I apologize for that, was talking about, although my map is now gone, how the bulk, right there, the bulk of the property is going to be tier one. Well, in the Stanton Springs Development Business Plan, it says that tier one classification has to abut Shire Parkway, and that's in Section 914 dot 2. That does not even come close to being on Shire Parkway. Also learned that yesterday afternoon, the developer is promoting a complex on 61 acres buffering this area, and that's the 61 acres up there. And the developer is asking for 400 apartments, 50 standalone houses, 22 townhouses. And are y'all aware that residential is going to go in right where the business is going in? Is that even permitted? I don't know, I'm asking. I just find it odd that all this development is now trying to come out there. Let me just digress for just a half a second here on the other development that's taking place out here, and I'll tie it into Social Circle at the end. And the Social Circle, City Council, has the opportunity to direct growth in a manner which is respectful to the people living in the area, the community at large, and the environment. Hiding behind nondisclosure agreements and not providing transparency on future development is unacceptable. Case in point is directly across Highway 278 from this property, and that's Rivian. And Rivian has been a disaster since it was first announced by Brian Kemp on 16th of December last year. The state of Georgia is assuming control, claiming sovereign immunity. Rivian is a for-profit, privately-owned company whose only connection to the state of Georgia is accepting tax exemptions and taxpayer money. Presently, Morgan County is being destroyed by this Rivian development. Walton and Newton Counties will soon be brought into the mix, and nobody is prepared for the chaos that's fixing to be let loose in this community. And the reason I'm mentioning all this is that the city of Social Circle is also involved in Rivian. You're keeping a low profile because it's all happening in Morgan County right now, but it's coming. It definitely will. I would like to see the city of Social Circle utilize this opportunity to direct the growth in a productive, respectful manner, mindful of the cities, mindful of the citizens, community and environment. and environment. Do not allow, Social Circle, do not allow this to be turned into another Conyers or Covent, or God forbid, Atlanta. Thank you so much, I appreciate the time.
Thank you for your comment. Anyone else in opposition that would like to speak? Please come forward.
I'm here tonight to ask that you-
Can you state your name and address first?
Oh, sorry. I'm Christina Wertz, and I'm on Daryl Drive in Social Circle.
Okay.
I'm here tonight to ask that you vote no to the proposed zoning change from agricultural to Stanton Springs Business Park. This zoning designation gives the development authority a ticket to do whatever they please with the land, including converting some or all of it to heavy industrial. Just like Mr. Evans talked about, Stanton Springs Business Park, I mean, they, one of the things that can be used for is heavy industrial. We've already got Rivian that's heavy industrial. This zoning designation takes away your control on what happens with this land once it gets zoned Stanton Springs Business Park. The ever-expanding heavy industrial takeover of this area has a huge detrimental impact to the many residents who are left surrounded in a sea of heavy industry. These residents, including myself, did not ask for this and do not want this. And I just want to show you on this map, so this is where we're talking about, and this part right here, you know, one of the other people mentioned, there is a future plan for that to be apartments and townhouses. All the rest of this is residential. And then we've got all this heavy industry, this is Rivian, and we've got another pocket here of residents surrounded by industry. So some of the concerns we have are water. All of the residences around are on well water. Residents next to the Rivian site have already seen contamination of their water caused by the construction, and it's only in the grading phase. What will happen when toxic chemicals brought in by heavy industry are produced on these sites? Safety. More heavy industry and possible high-density housing will lead to increased crime in the area. Many of the residents have children, children that will no longer be able to play in their yard because it won't be safe.
Your time is up. Can you wrap it up, please?
Okay. I just wanted to mention traffic, it's already a huge problem. Can't turn left on, off of Hancock or Daryl, or Davis Academy. So in summary, please don't turn Georgia's greatest little town into Fulton Industrial.
Thank you for your comment. Is there anyone else here to speak in opposition?
How much time's left for total public comment?
The time is officially up, it's 10 minutes. Far out, it's a straw position. And then for the, those in favor, those in favor, we gave them 30 seconds or more, so they'll get back in 3 minutes.
So can I say something in opposition or not?
Anyone in favor, you have 3 minutes.
I'm going to be brief in responding to some of the comments that were made. And as far as the legal comments about what the ordinance allows, I've talked with Mr. Powell about this, I would invite him to weigh in, but addressing those concerns raised by Mr. Gaither, the ordinance does not require the, this lot to be 1,000 acres. What it requires is it to be a part of a larger development that is 1,000 acres and in two counties. This is because it's part of the Stanton Springs Development Authority, or Stanton Springs Park. So it strictly complies with what the planning language of the ordinance. Second, you know, as far as the ordinance requiring staff to notify the JDA, the ordinance says that, I don't know if they did or not, but we did, and we've provided to you a letter from the JDA saying that they are aware of it and support this development. As far as the things that were required to be with the application, we used the city's forms fully, and we provided all of the information that was required. Now, there are, well, if you look at the section that he cited, it says "may include", and so the city could have asked more from us, but we had not ever been asked for more than what was provided. As far as, you know, showing you plans with building setbacks and things, we can't do that now because we don't have that information yet. I mean, we don't know where properties are going to go. What I can tell you is that this development will be under your city's development regulations, and will have to be reviewed and approved by your staff before we can begin construction. So you can know that your existing development regulations will be enforced on the site. And last, you know, there was a concern about the heavy industrial, one of the great things about your Stanton Springs Business Park designation is it limits the types of uses, industrial uses. And I don't think it allows heavy industrial uses. It does, it does allow light industrial uses. Also, I don't believe it allows distribution logistics-type facilities, which is, you know, not what would be planned to go there. So this is all consistent with your ordinances and your planning, and we would ask that you approve. Thank you.
I will now close the public hearing and bring it back to the council for a motion.
Your options in terms of taking action is, you know, they're stated in the amendment process. You can approve, deny, table, send back to Planning Commission, ask for additional information, all those are within your power in terms of decision-making. In terms of uses or other classifications that are available, that are similar, that you can zone to, I provided you with two. There's the Stanton Springs Business Park, but there's also a mixed-use business park, which allows similar uses, is in your ordinance designed for projects that are 100 acres or less. In order to get a comparable restricted zoning, I also provided you guys with some conditions that would match up to that development. And so those are in there. There's also a suggestion, I think, that in looking at it, that the planning director had carved off exclusion for residential uses, and so we'd looked at those over the last few weeks. We provided you with analysis of how it breaks down with regard to the differences between those two zoning classifications. To make them equally restrictive, we gave you zoning conditions that would match those up. And so you have those two choices to come up with an approval of the project or denial of the project, simply to vote against it. On the, on the subject matter of the zoning application and its worthiness, that is exclusively the jurisdiction of your planning director. It's not the Planning Commission's job, it's the planning director. And once she certifies that the application is complete, is complete. And so those were, those items were received to the extent she thought, and she's the governing person to do that. The Planning Commission is supposed to give you recommendations with regard to land uses. That would be whether it's an appropriate land uses, which is really what we're, we're, our primary function in terms of zoning determination is the big issue. It is, is this the appropriate use or is it not the appropriate use? It's really not. Is the application correct? And so technical issues are resolved before it gets to you, and it's the big issue. All of those technical obligations, I agree with the analysis that the code understands. Spring says it's got to be part of, there was a confirmation from the Joint Development Authority that this is part of, so that just falls off as, and they've met that standard. I agree with Barbara's analysis of all of those things. We asked your new planning director to also weigh in on those, and she said, yes, I agree with Barbara's analysis. So, so I think we're on solid ground for a normal zoning decision as you see fit. However, if you have any other questions, or if I can be of any further service, just let me know.
So you're saying that the application that we're seeing, everything is done correctly and legally, so we should, we should make a judgment, we can make a judgment on-
It's the merits, it's the merits of the decision, not the technicality of the application that's before you.
So what you're telling me is, is the, this comparison that y'all use to, let me find it, the MUBP zoning?
Yes, sir.
Ashley, is that, is that what you were referencing, your changes to was the MUBP?
Those zoning conditions, it's the proposed zoning conditions using the MUBP zoning, those conditions are not Stanton Springs conditions. They are conditions that would attach if you decided to use the mixed-use designation as the proper zoning classification, then they would attach, they would, they should be attached, so that you don't give up restrictions that are in the Stanton Springs ordinance that make it, make the development of a higher quality.
But it lessens the uses also at the same time?
Yes, it does, yeah.
That's why you want to look at the uses that are allowed under the Stanton Springs Business Park and conform those under mixed use. And I believe those prohibited uses, if you wanted to make those conditions, would be campground, kennel, mini warehouse storage facilities, skating rink for roller and ice, transportation terminals for freight, truck terminal, and also any and all residential uses.
It also stated on, I believe, that it, the setbacks would increase?
That is correct.
And the height restriction on buildings would reduce?
Yes, sir.
In moving to this new zoning category, you would also, there would be no data management or processing centers allowed, correct?
There is nothing in the ordinance that states that data management and processing centers are in allowed use in, in the mixed-use business park district.
And I-1, it'd be limited to I-1?
Correct, yes. With the exception of those that would be prohibited by the conditions if you choose to add those.
Yeah.
Would the applicant, is the applicant acceptable to MUBP zoning?
Yes.
Yes, there'd be no residential uses allowed on this, on this property.
My other question is, for the applicant, do y'all own the 61 acres that they referred to in here a while ago about apartments? Do y'all own that what was proposed that I asked you about to start off with?
No, that's, that's not IDA property, that's not under-
Y'all don't own that?
It's not under our control.
And that's still in the city limits, correct?
Yeah.
Yeah, it is, 61.
Okay.
So that would have to come through zoning.
It's got to go back to planning and zoning.
If somebody tries to do something-
If they try to do that.
Is there any additional information that we would need for the mixed-use business development?
How much is, how much is in the city limits? All this is in the city?
Yeah, all of this particular property is in the city limits. There's a map here that shows it.
And all of the utilities as well, right?
So, so all of the, you can see the property in question is outlined by the blue line. All the area that's colored in blue, until it dissolves, is in city limits. So the, you know, regarding the, the other property's been brought up a couple times tonight, that's the property, I'm not sure of mine, directions here, but it's to the top of, to the top or north of the, of the blue line.
And above it, was, was, is that city as well?
Everything in blue.
Everything in blue is in city limits.
The other is in the county, correct? In Newt County?
Uh, yeah, actually, I believe above that half-moon shape, it's probably Walton County. I think you can barely see a solid line that goes through, through the top of that, barely touches the top of that half-moon. I believe that might be the county, county line.
I'll make a motion to approve MUB, for the-
With the conditions?
With the conditions, that's stated.
Do we need to read those out? For the record, it's probably best to, to put in the record. So the conditions would be front setbacks to be 50 feet, side setbacks to be 20 feet, max building height is to be 75 feet, prohibited uses on the property is campground, kennel, mini warehouse storage facilities, skating rink, whether it's roller or ice skating, transportation terminals for freight, truck terminal, and any and all residential uses.
We have a motion on the table, is there a second?
Second.
We have a motion from Councilman Jackson and a second from Councilman Shelton. Is there any further discussion? All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposes? Motion carries.
You want to get some time to clear the room?
It'll take five minutes.
Um, pass the term if, um-
They get 10, they don't, they can only get 10 minutes. Yeah, they can only get 10 minutes.
I mean, that's what it's supposed to be used for, I mean, it's-
I mean, that's what it's supposed to be used for, I mean, it's-
I mean, that's what it's supposed to be used for, I mean, it's-
I mean, that's what it's supposed to be used for, I mean, it's-
I mean, that's what it's supposed to be used for, I mean, it's-
I mean, that's what it's supposed to be used for, I mean, it's-
Hey, hey Susan, he's, he's doing the same issue that I've been doing today, they're not being loaded, they're loading those.
I know, it's a mess on that one.
He just pulled up the elevations, that's where it shows by the top of the building. Just recently. It worked out something with, uh, format taking uploading.
There's possible.
This is just, y'all are doing a consent, Jim, from the Thanksgiving removal of that alcohol.
Okay. We're going to call the meeting to order. And we're going to have another public hearing for 586 North Cherokee Road, conditional use application. And it's going to go as follows, our staff is going to come up and give us a presentation and then an applicant, and then after that, we'll, all in favor will come up and opposition. And each side has 10 minutes.
Good evening, council, um, Mayor Proton, um, we do have an application at, uh, 586 North Cherokee, this is just one address that we've chosen because, um, back in 2006 and '07, there were five, you know, five houses located on this property, and, um, they were all condemned, and this is just a little history going backwards, um, they were all condemned and the fire department, um, burned these down, so we had vacant land, they made it all into one parcel, they rezoned this parcel office institutional with the intent of doing retail on the bottom and loft apartments on the top. Uh, back in 2007, the applicant brought that before the Planning Commission and the mayor and council, it was approved and, and, um, with retail on the bottom, not to exceed 5,000 square feet and not to, um, over, didn't have a, a number on the units on the development, on the condos, it just had a limit of 800 square feet for one bedroom, 1,100 square feet for a two-bedroom. Condos would be fee simple use for residential above the, above the retail. Um, the applicant is asking for a conditional use, and I'm going backwards to the slide, I apologize for that, but, um, she's asking for a condo and residence, a resi, a restaurant on the bottom. Now, this requires a conditional use to have a, um, condos on the top and restaurant on the bottom. Um, she's asking for a variance for 21 units instead of a 15 that's allowed by COE, they're asking for a variance for reduction of the front setback from 100 feet, um, to 50 feet. Now, I will go ahead and say that one was tabled, uh, we will, uh, go past our 45 days in, and we haven't gone past it yet, but we had canceled the December meeting, so we would go past the 45 days, uh, before the January meeting. A variance for the reduction on the required 75-foot buffer on the north side of the property to 60 feet. So, this is a, um, just a site plan, uh, or sketch plan that they have given us to show, um, that we're going to have 22,000 square feet of retail parking, with that will require 110 parking spaces. Residential will be the one and two-bedroom units on top, with 21 total, two parking spaces, actually total 42 parking spaces, so the total parking required is 152 spaces and they were, they're providing 158 spaces. Um, this is a little layout on the one-bedroom and two-bedroom, uh, you see the one-bedroom at the top, um, about 900 square feet, and the bottom is a two-bedroom, like 1,100 square feet. Um, I want to go to the conditional use, it is required to have condos and a retail space on the, on the top. Um, this is, well, like I said, we labeled it 586 because that was what the corner house was, the applicant, um, plans to do this out of brick and wood siding for the exterior of the proposed buildings and use paint colors that blend in with the historic colors. Um, the staff had recommended to the Planning Commission to consider approval of the request for the conditional use of condos being permitted in the O and I zoning. And this property was owned O and I back in 2007 when it was originally approved then, it just, the development didn't happen. The applicant also intends for this to be a HOA to oversee the condos in addition to the small retail stores and offices providing professional services with residential not exceed five units per acre, loft or condominiums above as permitted uses according to the ordinance. We took this to the Planning Commission in November the 30th, and the Planning Commission made a recommendation to hear the request for the conditional use, um, with the condos and have a restaurant on the bottom, so that is also required by conditional use. Um, the commission made a motion, second by, um, 108, second by, but it was, uh- Okay, I'm getting a little confused here, hold on, we've got so many variances on this one. Okay, that's on the living units. So, the mayor, the, the Planning Commission made a recommendation to have the condos on the top, residential on the bottom, and to allow the restaurant with the condition that they would only have 15 units, and they made that motion kind of in there, but they also, she had to make a variance request because she was wanting 21 units, and, uh, they did, um, recommend that she keep with the 15 units, and that would be five units per acre, this, uh, property's a little over three acres. So, this is the elevation samples, uh, what they would be, you've got one on North Cherokee, um, and one on Annie P Henderson Road.
What about the, um, there's another variance on the, uh, buffer, what was the recommendation on that?
Um, okay, on the, um, number of units, they recommended to have 15 units, five units per acre, and to allow the restaurant on the bottom floor. The other variance was to, um, have a buffer reduction from 75 feet to 60 feet on the north end of the property, that would be going toward Freshway, they wanted to have 60 feet instead of 75 feet. Um, the staff recommended to Planning Commission to consider the approval of variance request. The applicant has made repeated efforts to conform this project closely as possible to the ordinance and make a HOA. The Planning Commission made a recommendation to, um, deny that request and keep the required buffer and undisturbed 75-foot buffer, is what the Planning Commission recommended. The variance that was tabled was the variance they were asking to, uh, the setback in the highway corridor ordinance states you have 100 feet to the front, and they're requesting 50 feet. Um, they tabled it because on the, on the plan, it shows variance, uh, or right-of-way varies, and Planning Commission wanted to make sure what is the right-of-way and where would the building start from 50 feet, if they were to approve that. But that was tabled, we would probably need to have a, a meeting before the date of the Planning Commission so that we don't go past that 45 days, so that we would have a recommendation from the Planning Commission.
Um, I want to remind everyone that we will be having a public hearing for each one of these?
Yes, ma'am, you will.
Okay.
Yes, ma'am, there will be one for each one, there'll be one for the conditional use, um, and they added the conditional use comment is for the condos, condominiums, and they've been, they, they requested a restaurant, because I think they have someone that wants to go on that bottom floor with a restaurant. Then you have your variance at the front setback, then you have a variance on the buffer, and a variance to how many units can be on the property itself. The ordinance says you can have 15, that means you can have five per acre, they have a little over three acres, but you could have, uh, they were asking for 21.
So, just for clarification, the conditional use did pass?
Mm-hmm. Conditional use did pass to have the restaurant on the bottom and condominiums.
Any questions? Does that happen? Counsel, have any other questions? Thank you.
Thanks.
Is the applicant here?
Yes. Good evening, my name's Dana Sarr, and I appreciate the opportu, appreciate the opportunity to come back for y'all again 16 years later, a little bit more grayer. Um, this project is something that, uh, we've been excited about, uh, we want to be a good neighbor with the city, um, we're looking at, uh, we requested 21 lofts, um, and they recommended 15, um, we were, the conditional use was for the, um, restaurant along with the offices and the retail on the bottom, and then the 15 residential lofts to be independently owned and all be managed through an H O A, Community Association, for the commercial and the residential to maintain the grounds, and, um, that's pretty much what we're asking the city, uh, here to approve, we're all, originally we came in, we were hoping for three-story, but we realized it's better for the community to do the two-story, and so we scaled back again, and rather than 44, and asked, you know, the board here if they would consider the 21, uh, so we'll just leave it up to the council to determine what they would like, so.
Any questions?
Any questions?
Thank you. At the, at this time, um, is there anyone that's in favor of this project?
Good evening, Scott Gaither again, again, speaking from the Planning Commission's standpoint, um, I, I know there's four items and they're asking for, uh, for different public hearings, if you'd so allow me to, I'd like to go through the Planning Commission's recommendation on all these at one time instead of getting back and forth, if that's okay with the council, if that pleases the council, I do appreciate that. So, yes, for the, the request for the conditional use, the Planning Commission voted, uh, four to one to recommend to approve the conditional use for the condominiums and the conditional use for the restaurant, uh, with this condition, we recommend to five units per acre. Uh, the, the variance request for the 21 units instead of the 15, uh, the Planning Commission recommended to deny that, uh, is a recommendation unanimous five to zero, based on, and again, I'm going to quote our code section because our code section is the only way to keep us safe and secure from any challenge if we're following that legally. So, section 1502 states, "No variance may be granted for a condition of zoning required by the mayor and council in approval of a rezoning application, a use of land or buildings or structures that is prohibited by this ordinance, or permitted use which would result in a greater density of development on a property than would otherwise be allowed without a variance." Furthermore, in section 1501 dot one, subsection I states, "The variance is not for use of land or buildings or structures that is prohibited by this ordinance, or to change the density of use allowed by the zoning ordinance, or to grant a development right or standard in conflict with conditions of zoning imposed by the mayor and council." Uh, and then I'll back up to say, section 1501, "No building or structure shall here and after be constructed or altered to, one, exceed the height limitations, two, have a greater density per acre, or occupy a smaller lot than required here and under, and, three, have narrower or smaller front or rear side yards herein than required." So, based on the ordinance itself for granting variances, the Planning Commission found that, that we can't issue a variance to exceed the density, so therefore, that's why the Planning Commission recommended denial. The third item was a request for a 50% reduction on the front building line setback from 100 foot to 50 foot, again, as Barbara pointed out, the Planning Commission recommended that that item be tabled because there is ambiguity with the right-of-way and where that would sit, therefore, we asked the applicant to come back with a more concrete evidence of where the right-of-way line is, so we have an idea of where that building setback is. Uh, and then the, the fourth item was to request a buffer reduction from 75 feet to 60 feet on the north end of the property. Uh, that north end of the property, we all know is, uh, a wall of, um, of, uh, bamboo, thank you, it was right there on the tip and it just wouldn't come out, so, and our concern with that was, you have a residential, single-family detached residential property out of medium density just north of that bamboo wall, if that bamboo wall were to come down and be reduced, then you're, um, it's potentially exposing that family to noise, odor, vibration, anything, uh, light pollution that can occur from this location. Uh, furthermore, there are all the criteria, there are nine criteria in which the applicant has to state they need in order for a variance to be granted, and in the application, again, I'm going to disagree with the attorney here, um, it, we do have to look at what the ordinance says and what the application requires, and those nine criteria were not provided by the applicant or the staff as to how the hardships of the property would, uh, would justify a variance and reduction of a buffer, so that is why the, the Planning Commission recommend denial on that buffer request as well. Thank you so much.
Thank you. Is there any other, anyone else here to speak in favor of this project? Come? Give us your name and, and address.
Sure. Tom Brown, 169 North Dogwood Avenue, good evening, everybody, I appreciate the chance to, uh, give my favor, I am in favor of the conditional use with the residential over retail, I think the mixed-use development type is, it's a good place for that, it's close to downtown, it's close to retail up at Freshway, um, and with a, an I O zoning, something a lot less compliant with that area could happen, so the conditional use for condos over retail, I think is, um, is the right kind, and I agree with what the quarter commission said for the reasons they said, I'm in agreement with that.
Okay, thank you. Do we have any others here in favor of this project that would like to speak? Okay, seeing none, do we have any opposition to this project that would like to speak? Seeing we don't have any opposition, oh, do we?
This, the hearing, I mean, you combined the support-
Oh, it's just one, no, Tom.
-finding the opposition, are they going to be independent hearings? I want to speak on 25.
For now?
Independent.
This is just for the conditional use, mm-hmm. At this time, we'll bring it back to, oh, go ahead, how much time you have?
Just a couple minutes, I just want to, uh, clear a couple things, so-
You have four minutes.
Okay, I'll just take 30 seconds, just want to clarify that we're asking for the residential loft units above the retail, the 22,000 square feet retail that we proposed, and, I'm sorry, we're asking for 21, they've given their blessing of 15, and I'll leave the difference to you guys.
Okay, thank you. We'll bring it back to the council for discussion and a motion.
Um, I'll make a motion to accept the conditional use for, um, the conditional use for the retail, or residential on top, retail on the bottom with the restaurant.
Okay.
Condo, sorry.
Yeah, we have a motion from Councilman Boyd, do we have- Do we have a second?
Second.
Second for Councilwoman Shelton.
Discussion, did we come up with a number? I didn't hear the, the count.
That's for a different, uh, this is, that's the way I, the way I.
Because we combined their motion, this is strictly for the conditional use?
Right.
Okay. We haven't had the, the hearing for the other items yet? All right.
Okay. No further, if there's no further discussion, all in favor indicate by saying aye.
Uh huh.
Any opposed, opposition? Hearing none, the motion carries. Now we call a public hearing for 586 Request Reduction of Buffer from 75 feet to 60 feet on north end of the property. The applicant can come forward.
Okay. The purpose of this request, and working along with the city, and trying to submit everything that was necessary, feasible, required, we requested a variant 75 feet to 60 feet, which still would not disturb the, what do you call it?
Bamboo.
The bamboo. Which I didn't disturb it back then, and won't now. But, but yeah. So the 75 to 60 feet is a difference of 15 feet. And it, at this point, we request it. It would be nice to have it, just to make sure. But, once again, we'll leave that up to you guys.
Thank you. Do we have anyone else in favor of this project that would like to speak? Any opposition here that would like to speak in opposition? Okay.
Me again, at the same address.
Thank you.
I'll go say upfront that I'm really in favor of the mixed-use development. So my comments on the negative side, don't confuse that with me being against the mixed-use development at that, at that property. The buffer of 75 feet is in the ordinance, because typically, when you go from a high, high-urgency development, like Owen and I, to a residential, you have to pad that buffer, so that the residential is not, their quality of life and other safety otherwise are not interfered. A 75-foot buffer with natural buffer, the bamboo or whatever, I think a fence was mentioned, a six-foot fence. The six-foot fence would be okay, but it would not accommodate what's needed for the residential on noise abatement, light abatement, that kind of thing. So the 75-foot buffer makes sense to me. I support the decision of the recommendation of the quarter commission for those same reasons that Scott mentioned. That's it.
Thank you. Anyone else here that wants to speak that's against this project?
Against the buffer. That was, that was against the buffer.
Okay. Does she have any time for favor?
Yes, she got.
You want to reserve any time, Dana?
Um, no.
Okay. We'll close this public hearing and bring it back to the council for discussion and a motion. Do you all have any questions?
So, I guess I have a question, but. So we could do the 75 and say, they can't disturb the bamboo? Can you put in the bamboo?
So, so 60 and then say you can't disturb the bamboo?
So philosophically, staff agrees with leaving the buffer in there for all the reasons stated by Mr. Gaither and, and Mr. Brown. The issue really comes down to the material that's there. Right? Bamboo's an invasive species, and it grows everywhere if it's not controlled. And, you know, I, I think that it's, you know, nobody wants to have this developed on top of a house, as Mr. Gaither and Mr. Brown stated. And it needs some kind of, of a, of a buffer. I'm not sure that bamboo is the appropriate material. But I think of the ordinance, it's just an undisturbed landscape buffer. But, I mean, I think as long as there's any kind of landscape buffer in there, that's, that's, that's good enough to, you know, block all the noise and sound from, you know, between the two developments. That, that's already in your code.
Yeah. So not a fence, but a natural?
It'd be a natural buffer, yeah.
Did I tell them about the bamboo? So it's kind of in my area. It is an invasive species, so is protected. But you maintain and manage those two different ways. Bamboo's a lot easier to manage and maintain.
So what is the pleasure of the council?
So I, I just, I heard the applicant write. She is fine. I'm listening that, I'll make a motion to deny the request of the buffer.
We have a motion to deny the request.
So, I'm basically, that it needs to stay as the, as planning and zoning recommended.
I'll second that.
We have a motion and a second to deny the request. All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Uh huh.
Any opposition? Motion carries. Okay. Next, we will have a public hearing for 586 North Cherokee Road, request for 50% on the front building line setback from 100 feet to 50 feet.
Since this has not been heard by the Planning Commission yet, I recommend this particular variance having to be tabled to the January council meeting.
Okay. Is there a motion to table, or do?
I'll make a motion to table it to the January.
Second.
A motion and a second?
They have 45 days, which is it.
Yeah, but we're not past 45 days. Council shouldn't take action on it.
Okay.
They have time to get to that.
Yeah, Planning Commission can call, call meeting in time.
Okay.
So everybody who's interested in that needs to know that the public hearing here has not been held. And so if your public hearing will come back.
Okay. Okay. So there's nothing else to do with that?
We got a second.
Oh, we have a motion and a?
Second.
And a second.
All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Uh huh.
Opposed? Motion carries. Next, we have a public hearing for 586 North Cherokee Road, variance for 21 units. Ordinance states 15 units retail and condominiums. Would the applicant like to come and make a presentation?
This was a beer to the restaurant, is that correct?
No, this is for 21 units.
The 21 units.
Just the 21 units, okay. That's out of. Okay, yes. So basically, Dana Sauer, again, we're coming before the city asking for variance to add additional two units per acre, which would give us 21 units above the 22,000 retail space. That would include the retail offices and the restaurant. So, we're proposing one-bedroom, two-bedroom residential lofts. We think it would be a good addition to the community for this mixed-use development. Pretty much. Any questions? Nope. I was over my time.
Thank you.
Well, the site plate, this ready to pass the driveway off the old church. Is that called?
It has both, if you want to go back to the drawing, if you don't mind.
It's left, it's got, it's got access off of North Cherokee and the?
It does.
And, okay, because?
It does.
We didn't consider that.
I think it'd be appropriate to discuss that, when you're dealing with setbacks, since that's, front setbacks, since that's dealing with front of the building.
Is there anyone else here to speak in favor of this variance for 21 units? Anyone here in opposition? Please come forward.
Me again, same address. And again, I want to clarify that when I talk in opposition about something, I'm still in favor of this type of development. The right kind in the right place. I would support the quarter commission's recommendation, because it's a comprehensive kind of a thing. If you take five units an acre, or 21, and you put in the 22,000 square feet of retail, and the requirement, it would be like 150-plus parking spaces. That's where, in a comprehensive way, it's, it's putting a lot on three acres of land. So we talk about each one individually, but we kind of need to think of them all together. It's just one piece of land, one development. So for those reasons, I, I am opposed to going with 21 units, because collectively, with everything, that's going to put a lot of strain on that three acres.
Thank you. Anyone else here to speak in opposition for this project? Please.
Hello. My name's Matthew Bray. I live on Hancock Drive. I'll try to make it as brief as I can. Part of the general purpose of your own zoning ordinances says that they are meant to provide for protection and the constitutional rights and obligations of all citizens within the city. I think it's a good idea to stick to the ordinances you have for that reason alone. It's for protection of all citizens, not just certain select persons or entities or developers. It's meant to protect everybody. Some of the items that apply to this would be that the Planning Commission can only be granted by finding of the mayor and council that the condition that they're requesting the variance for is not the result of any actions of the property owner themselves. Wanting to increase the number of units is a direct action of the applicant themselves. It also, underneath another item line, this is under 161501, it also speaks to something that's been mentioned before, about changing the density of a use allowed by the zoning ordinance. That is prohibited to be done for your own zoning ordinances. I would ask that you please abide by the same rules you're asking everyone else to abide by. Some statements not 100% to this application, but to the general variances and rezoning applications that have come before you. If y'all don't adhere to your own regulations and ordinances, how can you expect for there to be equal and equitable enforcement of the same set regulations against any property owner of any type of zoning? By not adhering to it, it would not be fair, equal, or equitable application of the regulations. It also would not protect the enjoyment of existing adjacent property owners' developments that are given either rezoning or variances that shouldn't be allowed per your own regulations. If there's a problem with the regulations, there's a process where those regulations themselves can be changed. That would be more appropriate than allowing variances and rezonings that do not meet your own regulations. Thank you.
Thank you for your comments. Is there anyone else here against this project? Dana, would you like to reserve your time?
Yeah, sure. I just want to speak a couple minutes. I appreciate that, Mr. Bray, Mr. Brown. I just want to say that, you know, we, we're local, we're here. We've done a lot of work in the city. Mr. Scott lives in one of our neighborhoods. We did a lot of works. We want to be really good neighbors. You know, the whole purpose of, of your job and the community is, you know, we're here to present smart growth. We think that this is something that, you know, is, is needed in the community, and to help move in the right direction, and, you know, offer equality and a lot of opportunities. Unfortunately, you know, change is, is coming. And it's better for us to, you know, have the smart growth. And I just think this is an opportunity for the city. I would like to detach, I know y'all have tabled that, but the whole purpose of, you know, requiring the 50 to the 100 was just to have that streetscape look down, as you come down through the community. But we want to be good neighbors. We don't want anything that the city doesn't want. And this is a big project for us. And, you know, I appreciate everybody's concerns. And we still have to come through and, you know, this city and with the plans. And, you know, they still have a voice. We still have the tree board. So, you know, I don't think, I just appreciate your consideration for what we're offering the city. Thank you.
Thank you. We'll close the public hearing at this time. Get back to the council for discussion and a motion. Do you have any questions, or anybody?
I'm going to get this on the deck.
I'll, I'll make a motion then to deny the variance request for 21 units and stay at the code, which is 15 units.
We have a motion, do we have a second?
Second.
Have a motion and a second? All in favor, indicate by saying aye.
Uh huh.
Any opposition? Motion carries. Okay. Next, we will have a public hearing, consideration of a, of a revision of the sign ordinance.
This is just the overall sign modifications. Mayor and council, remember that we took a close look at our sign ordinance for the purposes of getting rid of any unconstitutional references to the restrictions of sign based on the content of the language in the sign. It's a sort of a difficult process to go through, but we hired an outside counsel that specializes in this. It really defends our ordinance from constitutional attack, which is a common litigation tool this year used by billboard companies. So, sort of an odd way to have to defend yourself, but that's what these changes are for. They're to take out the references to content-driven regulation sign and make it content-neutral. And so it comes to you with our recommendation, and with, I think, recommendation of staff.
I'll subdue this one.
Okay. Anyone else want to speak in favor?
Like Tom, I haven't moved. Yes, just to agree with what the city manager said. Planning Commission heard this request, had a public hearing, had about the same turnout at our public hearing for the sign ordinance revision as you guys have here. As the city attorney has pointed out, yes, having an audit on our sign ordinance is very important, and it's something that jurisdictions should probably do three to five to seven years, to make sure that constitutional protections are afforded to our citizens. And Planning Commission reviewed the sign ordinance. We didn't see any issues with it. We agree with the staff, and we recommend approval as well. That was unanimous, supremely. Thank you.
Thank you. Any opposition? Anyone want to speak against this? Seeing none, I'll bring it back to the council for discussion and a motion.
Make a motion to approve the sign ordinance. Second.
We have a motion and a second? All in favor, say aye.
Uh huh.
Any opposing? Motion carries. Next, we have the consent agenda. Eric, can you take us through that?
Certainly, Ms. Mayor Patelin. We've got eight items on the consent agenda this evening. Item one is the minutes of the mayor and council regular meeting from November 15, 2022. The second is the minutes of the mayor and council special call meeting of December 1, 2022. Third is the minutes of the mayor and council work session from December 1, 2022. Item number four is consideration of Sycamore Street parking lot bids. As council knows, we've been designing a new parking lot for the downtown. It goes right behind the fire station. And so this will award the construction of a parking lot to MHP paving in the amount of $245,706.25, the world's low bidder out of five. This item will also modify the SPOSS budget funding the amount of $1,5,681 under the water wastewater projects funding, and $140,025.25 from the transportation. The next item is consideration of a change order for paving the gutter work on Memorial Drive. At the meeting on October 6, the mayor and council approved awarding Walton County $34,000 to repave and do deep-mill work on Memorial Drive. Since the deep milling was done, we've come to realize that Walton County is not able to get their equipment down that street in order to do the? In order to do that street correctly, we need to be able to feather the edges or at least mill it in order to, you know, make sure that, you know, building up the pavement so high that you're blocking people's driveways and creating drainage problems. We've had an issue with that in the past. So this will modify that particular agreement with MHB paving for additional $26,457.95 to make that total project cost $60,457.95, and this is being paid for out of LMO funds. Next item is consideration of an amendment to alcohol ordinance to allow sales on Thanksgiving Day. Currently, you can't sell beer or wine in the city's social circle on Thanksgiving. Who knew? Until this year, when somebody wants to sell beer and wine. So, we recommend modifying that amendment to allow sale of beer and wine in city limits on Thanksgiving Day. And the final two items kind of go hand in hand. One is a consideration of amendment to personnel policy for probationary period employees, and the other one's a consideration of amendment to the personnel policy for employee rehire. Currently, the personnel policy does not address procedures for rehire of an employee who leaves and returns in a relatively short amount of time. So this particular policy will set standards in place, and in order to do that, you also have to modify the probationary period policy, so the two go hand in hand. And probationary period policy will also allow employees who are on probation to use a accrued vacation leave. Recommend approval of the consent agenda.
What's the pleasure of the council?
Make a motion to approve. Second.
We have a motion and a second. All in favor, indicate by saying aye. Any opposes? Motion carries. We don't have any unfinished business, so new business. Consideration of a resolution for the CDBG language access plan?
Yes, Mayor Portem. This is actually something that came to us on a time-sensitive nature after the last work session, and this is strictly procedural as it relates to having the CDBG funds that we currently receive. We currently have a million dollars project we just spent over on Cannon Drive, Cannon Drive area, and we also just received another million dollars to redo the sewers over the Marco Estates area. Part of that legislation requires a plan to be in place to be able to communicate with people who, where English is not their first language.
Okay.
Okay? We already have that in place with the current CDBG. This needs to be updated, the resolution needs to just be updated to say that these procedures are in place, and we recommend approval.
Do you have a motion?
So move it, please.
We have a motion and a second. All in favor, indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposes? Motion carries. And I don't think we have executive session. Can I get a motion to adjourn?
So move.
Second. We have a motion and a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Oppose? We adjourn. Thank you.